All right, we'll call the job that City Council being to order. Mr. Smith, you give us the prayer pledge and fight today, please.
You've assumed attitude for prayer. I'm proud to be come once again thankful for the many blessings upstir upon us as we just had the opportunity to celebrate the Fourth of July of our independence. We thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you now for these service people that will be recognized today for their service to this city. We thank you, God, for their commitment and dedication to the city of Apopka and its residents. We ask God to continue to bless them, bless their families, bless now this city council, all that we should say and do, pleasing, acceptable, and in thy sight, in thy son, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. July 4th, seventeen seventy-six. Continental Congress adopts a Declaration of Independence. In Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, the Continental Congress adopts a Declaration of Independence, which proclaims the independence of the United States of America from Great Britain and its king. The declaration came four hundred forty-two days after the first volleys of the American Revolution were fired at Lexington and Concord in Massachusetts. The Revolutionary War would last for five more years, with the final victory being at Yorkstown in seventeen eighty-one. In seventeen eighty-three, with the signing of the Treaty of Paris with Britain, the United States finally became a free and independent nation. Back to the day.
All right. First up, our important recognition awards, service pins, presented by Xander Balkum. Come on up, please.
Xander Balkum, Human Resources. Good evening. Or afternoon, excuse me. So we would like to take this opportunity to recognize employees, our employees, for our outstanding service and dedication. So as I call your name, if you would come forth and you would actually, Jackie would present you with your pen and with your certificate, and then we ask that you would stand to my right, and we will get a picture at the end. Okay? First employee, Erin Arnold, Community Development Planning Division. Ten years of service. A graduate of Boone High School, Erin Rings, Erin Hills, from the city beautiful Orlando, and moved to Apopka in two thousand four, when her husband began working with the City of Apopka Fire Department. She herself began working with the city on April first, two thousand thirteen, as a records clerk in the Police Department Support Services Division. On October twentieth, twenty fourteen, she transferred to utility billing as a cashier slash customer service clerk. She then transferred to community development as a secretary to on July twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. On October first, twenty twenty, she was promoted to the office manager. Erin continues to serve our community in this position today. Erin and her husband Brad have been married for almost nineteen years. They have three daughters. Two of their daughters are married and both graduated from University of Central Florida. Their third daughter will be entering high school in the fall. When not at work, Erin enjoys spending time with her friends and family, hanging out by the pool, shopping, and going on vacations to new and exciting places. I like that part here. That's me. Thank you, Erin. Next, we have Robert Rob Hipppler, senior. Information Technology. Thirty years of service to the city of Apopka. Rob was born in Lansing, Michigan, and raised here in central Florida. He attended the Police Academy at Seminole State College and joined the Apopka Police Department on April twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-three, as a police officer in patrol, now known as field services. On April eleventh, nineteen ninety-seven, he transferred from patrol to the Criminal Investigations Division. He was promoted to police sergeant on January fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, and on February eleventh, two thousand five, he was promoted to the rank of captain. On June twenty-first, twenty-ten, Rob transferred from the Police Department to the Information Technology Department as an IT supervisor. On September seventeenth, twenty fifteen, he was appointed interim IT director, and on January fourth, twenty sixteen, he was promoted to IT director. He continues to serve in this position today. Rob has been happily married to his wife Diana for the past thirty-two years. He has a son who is a firefighter slash paramedics with the City of Apopka Fire Department, and a daughter who is a police officer with the City of Altamont Springs. When not at the office, Rob enjoys spending time with his family, friends, and a trio of Sharays. If you don't know what Sharays, these are dogs, big dogs that love to cuddle up with Rob. I've seen pictures. Next, Austin Bitter, Police Department, Field Services, five years of service. Austin Bitter joined the Apopka Police Department on May first, twenty eighteen, as a police officer in field services. Notably, he served as a member of the Field Training Officer Unit. Officer Bitter continues to serve our community in this position today. Emmanuel Manny Sosa, Police Department, Field Services, five years of service. Officer Sosa was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York. In two thousand ten, he moved to central Florida, where he went on to become an associate, to obtain, excuse me, an associate's degree in hospitality management from Valencia State College prior to joining the police force. On May first, twenty eighteen, Officer Sosa began working with the Apopka Police Department as a police officer in field services. He continues to serve in this position today. Notably, Officer Sosa also serves as a member of the Field Training Officer Unit. Throughout his career, Officer Sosa has taken pride in his ability to complete all tasks within the highest of quality in all efforts to ensure, and ensure the security, safety, and quality of life for the citizens of Apopka. One of the fondest memories involves volunteering with the Shop With The Cop program. He feels his, he feels this annual event is extremely, I'm sorry, extraordinary and potentially life-changing of all of the participating children. In his time off, Officer Sosa enjoys playing softball and baseball, and also likes to ride his bike in Apopka in the greater central Florida area. Next, Dave, David, Dave Witty. Dave is with our Police Department Support Services Division, which is code enforcement, twenty years of service. Dave was born in Tampa, Florida, and moved to central Florida in nineteen eighty-two. He is a certified code enforcement professional through the Florida Association of Code Enforcement, Code Enforcement, excuse me. Notably, he received a life-saving, life-saving award in January of twenty fourteen. Dave began working with the city on June sixteenth, two thousand three, as a code enforcement officer within the Community Development Department. On February twenty-first, two thousand six, code enforcement was transferred to the Police Department. He continues to serve our community in this position today. Throughout his twenty years of ser, twenty-year career, Dave looks back fondly on the annual Employee Thanksgiving and Christmas luncheon and the, and the togetherness they bring. Dave is married with three rescue dogs. Together, he and his wife enjoys visiting family. Interestingly, Dave enjoys collecting lanterns. Awesome. Next, we have Brett Webster, Police Officer, Field Services, twenty-five years. Sergeant Webster began working with the city on June first, nineteen ninety-eight, as a police officer in patrol services. Notably, on June ninth, two thousand one, he began serving as field training officer. He was promoted to the ranks of Corporal Lead Police Officer on January twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. On May eighteenth, twenty fourteen, he was promoted to the ranks of Police Sergeant, where he has served in both field and support services. Sergeant Webster continues to serve our community in this position today. Ally Messina, Junior, Public Services. Public Services Department Utility Plant Maintenance Division, five years of service. Ally began working for the city of Apopka on April sixteenth, twenty eighteen, as a plant mechanic in the Public Services Utility Plant Maintenance Division. That just seemed like a whole lot to say. He was promoted to instrumentation technician on June fourth, twenty twenty-two, and he continues to serve in this position today. Next, we have Alex Sanchez, Public Services Department. Alex is part of the wastewater maintenance, five years of service. Alex began his career with the city on May twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, as a lift station mechanic in the Utility Plant Maintenance Division of Public Services. On January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, he was transferred to wastewater collection maintenance as a utility service worker two, and continues to serve in this position today. Kenneth Scott Kraus. Kenneth is also part of the Public Services Department Waste, I'm sorry, Water Treatment Plant, fifteen years of service. Scott was born and raised in Baltimore and moved to central Florida in April of two thousand eight. He began working for the city on May twelfth, two thousand eight, as a water plant operator B. He was reclassified to water plant operator A on August twenty-second, two thousand eight. On January fifteenth, twenty seventeen, Kenneth was promoted to water plant chief operator. He continues to serve in this, in, serve our community in this position today. Ryan McNeely. Ryan also works in Public Services Department in utility maintenance, and he has fifteen years of service. Ryan began working for the city of Apopka on April twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, as a maintenance worker one in the Street Maintenance Division of Public Services. On May fifth, twenty fourteen, he was transferred to Utility Restoration as a utility service worker two. On April nineteenth, twenty sixteen, he was reassigned to Utility Construction Division and promoted to construction foreman on November fourteenth, twenty sixteen. On February thirteenth, twenty seventeen, he was transferred to Utility Maintenance Division as a utility service worker two, and continues to serve in this position today. Ryan Leonard. Ryan is a part of Public Services Department as well, utility maintenance, twenty years of service. Ryan began working for the city on April fifteenth, two thousand three, as a meter reader. On October thirty-first, two thousand five, he was transferred to the Grounds Division of Public Services as a maintenance worker one. On April nineteenth, twenty sixteen, he was transferred to Utility Construction as a utility service worker one. On May twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, he was promoted to utility service worker two in the Utility Maintenance Division, and continues to serve our community in this position today. Last but not least, Mr. Terry, I'm sorry, Terrence Terry Griffin. Terry works in Parks and Recreation in the Cemetery Division, and he has ten years of service. Terry began working for the city of, for the city on April first, two thousand thirteen, as a caretaker two, maintaining the Edgewater Greenwood Cemetery. He continues to serve our community in this position today. That concludes all of our employees for their, for their outstanding service and dedication, and if we can just give them all a round of applause. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Oh, if you would come around for a picture with the commissioners and the mayor. Kelly would tell you.
It's interesting that two of the employees came in, one of our wonderful police, and then moved on to IT and to cemetery. All right, just want to shout out, James.
Is James, okay, was my, James, stand up, that's my intern. Where, where did he go? I don't see. Ja, yeah, you, James. He's part of the Apopka Youth Works Program this summer, so he's been shadowing mainly Stacy, but doing a great job, and I think this will be the last day we'll see him, so congratulations for hanging in there with us for the last, what's, almost five weeks, I guess, something like, and done a great job for us in, in the city mayor's office. So thank you for, thank you for what you did for us this summer. Thank you, James.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, approval of minutes. Any changes to the minutes? If not, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, training and safety update. Chief?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. I'm here to present this month's Safety and Training Update Report. I want to start with an update on our peer support team. As we know, as first responders, we're faced with events that are recognized as anything but ordinary. What we see day in and day out requires continuous physical, emotional, and mental strength. We are very fortunate that we get a lot of this support by leaning on each other or our peers, and something that we must do when we're faced with something that is bigger than us. Peer support is, of course, first and foremost, our peers, but it's also beyond that. It extends to numerous resources that are available to our firefighters. Our peer support team is constantly reminding our department of the resources they have available for the members. This latest illustration is the letter I just gave each of you that we mailed out to our entire department over the past month, reminding them of the resources that are available to them and to their families. Again, they've been meeting regularly, and again, we sent home that information, so just wanted you guys to have that. Our next update is about our mentorship program. The peer mentoring program provides AFD with the opportunity to develop and support their employees in a formal way. This process began August of last year. It's something we kind of, we established a steering committee to, to see how we wanted to, again, formalize or not formalize our peer support program, I'm sorry, our mentorship program. It went back and forth, there was a lot of talk about whether it was going to be formal or informal, whatever was going to involve training or just mentorship in general, which is separate, but one of the biggest things that we wanted to emphasize was confidentiality. Again, we want to develop something, we're not just developing for now or next year, but something that's going to last generations, hopefully. In the long run, it was, it was originally established it was going to be an informal process, in other words, an organic way of establishing mentorship. A peer mentor is designed for, for each interested employee, it has to be an interested employee, it's not something that's mandatory, although most of our people do participate in it. For each interested employee that has successfully completed their initial training, in other words, their new hire orientation and firing EMS. The peer mentor is not there to be an instructor or conduct evaluations. Again, that was something that the committee, we wanted to make sure we separated the training aspect from mentorship. This is something that, you know, you can reach out for things not related to training-related issues. The role of the peer mentor is to provide guidance, support, and encouragement. And again, mentoring provides an important network of inclusion and support. That was the biggest emphasis we wanted to do. Mentors shall be accountable, respectful, and proud to honor this noble profession with integrity and trust. Something, again, we mentioned before, confidentiality, that was one of the biggest emphasis that was made from the steering committee. We want to make sure that the peer mentorship program recognizes and respects the importance of confidentiality between the peer mentor and AFD mentee. Some of the things with our programs that we've established, formalized now, is actual agreements between the mentors and mentees. This is something, a mentor who signs up, they're vetted through the process. We make sure that there's some, there's some, there's someone who wants to participate in this program, and we actually make sure that they attend specific classes for these types of, of training. One of the things we are able, been able to offer recently is Frank, I'm probably going to say his name wrong, Vasescio from New Jersey, he's a deputy chief of New Jersey, does lots of leadership and mentorship training, someone we were found, and anyone who is now a mentor has to go through that one and a half hour training video to make sure that they, it's something they want to do and they have, get the right information. One of the biggest things we're also making sure that they establish, again, is periodic review of these guidelines, and something done by the program coordinator, and revisions will be made as necessary. Again, this being our first year, we've done a lot of different thoughts, processes, changes, things like that. Again, confidentiality being the biggest emphasis. AFD Mentoring Individual Development Plan is something that we often come up with, where the mentor and the mentee work together to complete goals for successful performance in the employee's current position and short-term career thoughts. So again, once they're out of orientation, we set them up, they establish their own plans together, and we evaluate that as we go throughout the process. One of the last things we're starting to implement, as we're seeing our first year of people going through, is an actual confidential evaluation of the mentoring process itself. So again, something, it is naturally evolving. We want to make sure that we're connecting all our Ts and dotting all our Is, so it's something we want to evaluate as we move forward. The training update, in this, in this, this month, we're going to be offering some engine operations training, which is specific to engine, or truck, excuse me, engine or pumper operations, specific to pulling hoses and things like that. There's going to be a command and leadership class offered in August and September, has been offered to all of our current officers. Building construction and strategies and tactics, all part of Fire Officer One, which is going to be offered in the near future as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Yesterday, I know I spent time with Chief Maynard and Chief Sean Knapp, and they kind of broke down how this program is starting. The one thing I forgot to ask them was, when you do your, your annual evaluations of the employees and, and the supervisors and that, is this program going to be part of that evaluation?
No, ma'am. This is something completely separate. It's, it's, the evaluation, the evaluation is of the program itself, not on the performance, if that makes sense, and there's things just that we can tweak and look at how we're doing certain things, but this will not reflect anything on our evaluation.
I thought that was interesting. Why wouldn't it be part of their overall evaluation, especially the mentors?
Well, one, it's a voluntary program, you know, something that, that, you know, they're not required to do. Two, we want to make sure that this is something separate, that they feel comfortable. If, if someone's struggling with something outside of training, or they want to know, understand processes, we want them to feel secure and be able to go to their mentor and ask, something's funny about silly questions, that's the whole point. If we, if we involve that in our evaluations, that's just going to, I think, defeat the purpose.
Good, okay. Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Okay, next up, the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Blanche Sherman.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. At this time, I want to introduce Daniel Anderson. He's a partner with Malden and Jenkins LLC, they're auditors, external auditors. Daniel's going to give you an overview of the results of the audit. Daniel has been with Malden and Jenkins for ten years, he's been a partner for two years, and this is his first year as a partner on this particular audit. Daniel?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As Blanche mentioned, my name's Daniel Anderson, I'm the partner with ultimate responsibility of the city's twenty-twenty-two fiscal year-end audit, which we just completed last week. I've got a brief presentation for you here this afternoon to go over the audit results, and then at the end, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. As Blanche mentioned, Malden and Jenkins is the, the city's auditors. We are a large regional audit organization, serving seven hundred governmental entities throughout the southeast. Your audit was performed out of our Bradenton, Florida, office location. One thing that we're happy to do is offer free continuing education to our clients, so Blanche and her team, and that actually extends to anyone within the city or on the commission, if you want to receive any of our quarterly continuing education courses. It's webinar-based, so you can do it right from wherever you may be, so certainly something we're happy to provide. As far as the audit results go, we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance we can render. Therefore, in our opinion, the results present fairly the financial position and operations for the twenty-twenty-two fiscal year end. Some additional reports that you'll note in the back of the annual conference. Some additional reports that you'll note in the back of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. One, we refer to as the Yellow Book Report, which is a report on our tests of the city's internal controls and compliance with respect to laws, rules, and regulations. This is not, there's no opinion issued within this report, like the audit opinion, but it provides a form of negative assurance if nothing was identified. We did have one finding, 2022-001, that I'll refer to here in a few moments. Additionally, we did have to conduct a single audit over two major federal programs as the city had over $750,000 in federal awards. As far as, as far as a single audit goes, for each of those major programs, we test compliance with respect to the grant, as well as internal controls over compliance. The two awards that we tested accounted for over 95% of the expenditures during the fiscal year, and there were no issues noted as far as the single audit goes. We've also issued an independent auditor's management letter, which goes over our test of the city's compliance with respect to the rules of the Auditor General, and there are no issues noted in this report. And then lastly, we performed an examination over the city's compliance with Section 218-415 of the Florida statutes concerning the investment of public funds. And there were no issues noted as far as the, the city's compliance with those statutes go. Some of the required communications that we have under auditing standards. Ultimately, management is responsibility for the financial statements and their accounting policies. We encountered no difficulties in working with management and performing the audit. There were audit adjustments that were prepared and provided to management as far as the audit process goes, but there were no uncorrected misstatements where we proposed an audit adjustment and management elected not to post them. We had no disagreements with management over the application of any accounting policies or procedures. At the conclusion of the audit, we obtained written representation from management over the accuracy of the information provided to us. We're not aware of management's consultations with other accountants, or what we refer to as opinion shopping. There were no significant issues discussed with management to bring to your attention. And lastly, Malden and Jenkins is independent with respect to the city. And as I mentioned earlier, there was one finding noted within the audit, and that was due to a restatement that was required on the beginning net position. Essentially, there were some accounts, items accrued for in accounts payable and capitalized in construction and progress at the end of the 2021 audit, or at the end of the 21, 21 fiscal year that weren't actually incurred until the 2022 fiscal year end. So we essentially reduced construction and progress and accounts payable for these items. And then, within your governmental funds, those were reported as expenditures. So we decreased the accounts payable, and we increased the fund balance for each of those funds to restate the beginning amounts to be where they should have been. With that, that's the conclusion of the presentation that I have. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for Daniel?
I just have one, just to, I know you just explained it. If you can use layman's terms and possibly reference the document we have as well, of where that restatement came from and how that, explain it to me like I don't know what I'm talking about.
No problem at all. So when Blanche and her team were preparing the, the accounts for the 2022 fiscal year-end audit, they noted that some items had been accrued for previously, and they were seeing in accounts payable that were capital-related expenditures. So essentially, there were purchase orders that were outstanding to where previously, those were actually recorded as actual expenditures instead of just being a, a purchase order for a future expenditure.
Can you give me like a specific example of what we, of one of the CapEx that we didn't?
Um, I'm not aware of any specific projects that I can think of off the top of my head, but Blanche might be able to help me out here.
Unfortunately, the amendment that was approved for a budget amendment at the end of '21 to carry forward POs, as he just mentioned, and capital projects into '22, it was booked as an actual journal entry instead of a budget amendment. Therefore, it resulted in overstatements.
He's just looking for like a, or are you looking for like a, an example of one that was, that we had to carry forward?
It was any of those, I don't know the, the details of any of those major projects, like Gross and Barker, any of the major projects that were going on at that particular time.
Okay.
So, and, and the POs as well.
Okay.
Okay, I can give you those details, however.
If you can, that'd be great.
I definitely have.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Good.
Good, thank you.
The only question I had is, were there any other, were there any accounting treatments or principles used for this, this budget year versus previous budget years? Account treatments are the same, or?
There was a significant standard that was implemented, and that was GASB 87 over leases. As we went through the audit process, that really didn't have a too, too big of a significant impact on the city. Previously, there were items reported in your financial statements as capital leases, and we've just renamed them finance purchases under that new standard. The new standard kind of redefines what constitute a lease, constitutes a lease. And there were previous things that were capital leases or operating leases, and the new standard said, okay, some of those operating leases, we want to bring onto the balance sheet and record a right to use the asset and a corresponding liability. Blanche and her team provided us with a detailed listing of a bunch of contracts that she thought may be applicable, and we evaluated those contracts and determined that they were no longer, or they were not applicable under that new standard. But the prior capital leases, based on the new standard, need to be considered finance purchases, and they operate more like a note payable than a capital lease arrangement.
And then on the statement of net positions and things like that, or is other post-employment benefits factored into that?
Yes, that's on your statement of net position.
But that's still treated the same way, the same treatment as it has for the past?
Correct, there's been no change of that. And I'll say, the one thing that I pointed out to Commissioner Velazquez when we met earlier, if you look at your net pension liability, I know that's a, the funded ratio of those pension plans is something that a lot of governing bodies are really concerned with. There was a big fluctuation within the net pension liability from the 2021 fiscal year end to the 2022 fiscal year end, if you just look at that on its own. So I think the total liability went from $7 million to around $50 million, which sounds like a big deal, and it very much is. It's all really related to the investment income that the plans earned or didn't earn within the 2022 fiscal year end. The standards, GASBs can be very confusing, and that, that's GASB 67 and 68 under the pension standards. The one thing that they did right is they said, okay, we realize there's going to be some significant fluctuations within that liability, but instead of incurring that giant expense that you would think you would have had in one year, they amortized those over several fiscal years, so it doesn't have a significant impact to your net position. You'll just see big variances in your net pension liability, the deferred outflows related to pensions, and the deferred inflows related to pensions, all of which are on the statement of net position. So, and then as far as the new standards go, GASB 87 for the leases for this year wasn't really a significant impact on the city, but there is another one, GASB 96, on subscription-based IT arrangements that operates in a similar manner to where if the city has contracts for any information technology-based services, you know, they may actually bring those, the future payments to that onto the balance sheet, and you might have a right to use a subscription-based IT asset and a corresponding liability for that. So that's certainly something that, you know, throughout the course of the summer, we'll be working with Blanche and her team to identify any of those potential contracts and evaluating if they're applicable under the standard.
Yeah, and Ms. Sherman offered, offered your services up. I just got the CAFR today. I was out of town, so I would like to inspect a little bit further, because even just spot checking, there's a couple fluctuations that I don't know how to.
Yeah, absolutely. And that goes for any of you guys as well.
Thank you.
Daniel, one question. Across the cities that you manage, or counties, whatever, what, the internal rate of return on pensions, are we about the norm?
It's, I would say, everyone, and it can be very confusing as well when it talks to your net pension liability and the funded ratios, because different entities have the opportunity to choose what they refer to as their measurement date, which is the actuary determines the total liability, and the city can determine any point within one fiscal year of your year-end to say, well, this is when we're going to evaluate what our assets are against that liability. So just for instance, the Florida retirement system went from a $7 billion liability to a $50 billion liability in totality there. So a lot of the other entities that we audit chose a fiscal or a measurement date of one year prior. So they haven't seen that big of a fluctuation in their net pension liability. They'll be seeing that next year.
You didn't answer my question, though. For the internal rate of return that, that we're basing our?
The 7%.
7%?
Yes, and that's.
Standard?
It's pretty, you know, the, like I mentioned, the Florida retirement system's at 6.7%. And I think everyone's between 6.5 and 7.5%. Sorry about that, I was thinking the investment rate of return.
Yeah, I mean, when I was in the legislature, we had, we went from, I will think it was, I want to say we were at 7.25, and we dropped it to 7, and it was about a, oh, it was hundreds of millions of dollars in additional liability we took on. But it was the right thing to do, because we need to make sure that our, our, you know, the, the internal rate of return meets that, or we become, have a bigger, bigger pension liability. So, and obviously, this year, you know, with the huge loss we had, I know we're getting a lot of it back this year, but yeah. So that's, that's, that's good, I appreciate that.
And there is a disclosure in there that says if you move the, that rate of return up a percent or down a percent, how that would impact the net pension liability. So you can kind of see, you know, here's where we're at. If we reduce that to 6%, here's what that net pension liability would be. And if we increased it to 8%, which would show that significant fluctuation that you, you referred to.
I wouldn't mind looking at maybe a 6.25 as a, you know, I, I just, I just worry about, you know, the markets and, you know, where we are today. And I know that, you know, I sit on the pension board as well for the, the general employees, and, and we look at, you know, assets and liabilities, and want to make sure that, you know, we're protected. We've got, you know, I'd like to be, I don't know where we are now, we're probably, I think we're in the low 90s, but I'd like to, you know, kind of my benchmark would be above 95%, you know, assets to liabilities. And so if you could have our team maybe run some numbers at about 6.75 and see what that would cost us additional for this next year's pension, that would be, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I definitely think that's something Blanche could do with the actuaries.
Okay, thank you.
I have one final quick question. In reference to the, the kind of compliance reports or reviews that you did, in 2021, there was a, we moved some funds into an investment account. Was that something that was a pretty large change or investment that we made? Was that, that was directly related to, you, you checked that for compliance with the Florida statutes?
Yes, sir.
And everything cleared for you?
Yeah, everything was in compliance with, with the requirements outlined by the statute.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Daniel, appreciate it. And we're going to get this one done a lot earlier next year.
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Blanche. Thanks for, your team worked, ooh, last week, big week for you guys. So thank you for hanging out and, and making it happen. So teams to be recognized, thank you. Okay, before we get into public comment, I want to read the decorum statement. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off cell phones or set them to silent. It is the policy of the City Council to permit and encourage input and comments by members of the public on all matters that may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council, please proceed to the podium when called upon and speak clearly into the microphone, saying your name, address of record, organization, if any. Direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourage constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain at all times from rude or derogatory remarks, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from council chambers. With that, Susan?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and everyone in the rightful place. Want to say thank you to everyone for your patience while you waited for us to deliver what we promised. Family Fun Day is this Saturday, July 8th, at 10:00 a.m. Come early, because the prices are on a first-come basis till all the prices run out. We got lots of prices. Okay, so, wait a minute. You still don't know who we are? All right, well, please visit NaomiKids.com. Also, check us out on Facebook to learn more about all the great work we've been doing in the City of Apopka for the last nine years. So on this Saturday, it's going to be free admission, free parking, free games. But please, you hear a lot of freeness, but please walk with cash or your cards to support our local vendors, food, dunk tank, drinks, and of course, donations are always welcome. Okay, so on that day, we have a fun-packed date, but we're also going to be honoring Austin Duran. Thank you to Mike Duran. Don't know how he does it, because with all he's dealing with, he has been truly a rock to me. Texting me, reminding me what I need to be doing, is this in check, is this ready to go? He's been awesome. So we're also going to be honoring Austin. And do you, any one of you can guess what is Austin's favorite song? No, you don't. So coming out to find out. We will be showing love for the Duran family and also for our entire Apopka community. So these are some of the things. I know you guys see, we have a lot of activities included. Chief, are you ready? We will be dunking, our police chief, Chief McKinley. Also, we will be dunking, this, I want to see this one. So if you want to just come out to see, we're going to be dunking Commissioner Becker. That's going to be very interesting. And also Lieutenant Klepper from the fire department. All right, we are in need of volunteers, because the, we want, for two reasons, we need volunteers. So the ones we have can take time to also enjoy the event. And we had volunteers who came in on June 17th, the original event, to help, from New York, Georgia, and Hawaii, but they all had to return to go back to work. So we are in need of volunteers. We're also in need, if you can, give donations to help cover. We have some unreimbursed costs from the first event. The first event was stormed out, not just rained out, it was stormed out. But unfortunately, there were a lot of stuff that was already set up that we couldn't recover the costs for, and we have to pay again to do those events, including truck rental, the dunk tank and stuff. So any help you can give, we will appreciate it. You can call. The number is up on the screen. You can call, you can text us, you can message us on Facebook. And most importantly, even if you can't do any of the other things, just come out and have a great time with us. We promise you, we're ready for you, so be ready to have some fun. Thank you all for listening.
Albert McKinney, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. Good afternoon, Commissioners, good afternoon, Mayor. You have to excuse me, I have scribbled some notes down. Things change very quickly today, and I've changed the topic of my conversation. Better a month ago, I came here with some documentation, which I handed to the commission, to the mayor, and to Susan Bone. In that documentation, there were, there was a letter directed to Dennis New from Brian Nelson. In fact, the letter was rather strange inasmuch as the reply from Brian Nelson was strange, because Brian Nelson was not the recipient of the email that was sent in. So at some point or other, that email traffic had been intercepted, and the mayor replied to something that it was nothing questioned to him. Recently, Commissioner Becker also noted internal mail had been interfered with. We would like the commission to investigate the situation regarding public records requests so we can establish where the interference is coming from, with someone either with IT experience or within the public records office. It's a serious matter to interfere with mail. I instigated an investigation by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement back in March of this year. And today, I was back with, in touch with FDOL with regards to public records requests. And there are people here who I know have already been interviewed. So be aware that people are coming to ask questions. We would prefer if the commission could answer those for us in the first place. Some time ago, I spoke to Susan Bone and requested a list of outstanding, partially fulfilled, public records over the last 24 months. Susan explained that she was not bound to supply this information, but she would. Without this information, we cannot make inference to which, if any, information is being withheld or delayed. This information may be relevant to election interference or election fraud. Recent financial records were supplied to Commissioner Nick Nesta. Why are we still waiting for these same records? In essence, without a current list of all outstanding record requests, we as taxpayer residents are being denied the ability to hold this city accountable. Commissioners, you are responsible for a records clerk. I don't believe that Susan has done anything wrong, but I believe you have the ability to find out why our record requests are being delayed. At this point, we have instigated a lawsuit against the city. We've informed Susan on several occasions when this was going to take place, and we still have no records. Another thing, recent social media posts suggest that Jean Sanchez will now report directly to the mayor. Can anyone confirm or deny this? If this is true, it would effectively be a a vote of no confidence in our planning director. In effect, it would, an analogy would be, it would be like instructing Steve Rickbrick to report to Brian Nelson instead of the police chief. If staff are not appointed to, if staff are appointed to report to the mayor, how will this affect the commission's ability to provide checks and balances? Thank you.
Leroy Bell?
Leroy Bell, Maude Hella, Apopka, Florida. First, I want to start with, the young man just mentioned this FDLE investigation. I had nothing to do with it. He initiated this. Someone came to me in this chamber when we just walked in. The mayor just read a disclosure, how we citizens supposed to conduct ourselves in these meetings. And one of your little trolls just threatened me verbally and with bodily harm. Just a few minutes ago back there. I'm not that guy. You can't bully me. I'm not afraid. I got a brother I figured that dead and in hell. I got a father that dead and in heaven. And I'm doing a vacation and I don't care which one I visit. One free pass, one free pass is all you get, Brian Nelson. One free pass. You keep your little bullies out of my face. I know you, Rod Love, and some of the Minnesota story lines, about 90, 97% I know you really don't care for Leroy Bell. But I know Leroy Bell 100% don't care a flying fuck.
Mr. Duran?
Dr. Ann Clermont. Uh, first I want to start thanking the commissioners and the community and everybody that came out to attend Austin vigil on Friday uh, for the support for Austin and our firefighters. Our family is super grateful for that. I would like to continue my request for getting an answer from the city administrator to weigh in on relieving Wylem of his duties. I would like the city administrator to take into account the past performance of Sean Wylem and John Howe, public outcry, 85% of no confidence from the fire union, and a 3-2 split from the commissioners. I've obtained performance reviews from firefighters from 2021 to date. Here's just some examples of non-perfect reviews and the reasons why. EMS reports were not always completed on time, did not complete October's power DMS training, has not taken any classes this year. It's kind of hard to do when the city only pays $300 a year. A review from one of your chiefs lost a point due to the occasional errors on the personal personnel evaluations relating to another personnel's evaluation as a template from another employee. Remember, two of John Howe's reviews, perfect scores, were mirrored reviews, word for word, copied and pasted. Another chief lost two points, and the reason was because he occasionally complains about city policies and procedures. After the death of my son Austin, what have we discovered? Poor policies and poor procedures. There were none on that sand trailer that killed Austin. Not only did we not listen to the chief, we retaliated and took two points from his review. Firefighter EMT Austin Duran's review, date 7/5/21, one year on the job. Remember, 10 months into his career, he had wrote a letter and he spoke about the lack of trust, lack of a mentor, and not being able to go to senior staff in fear of how they would react to his questions. Points lost. Still learning the city. Points lost. Education would help suppression learning curve. Who is division chief of suppression? Perfect score, John Howe. Points lost. Still learning on the job about where he should be when responding to emergency situations. Who trains rookie firefighters as to where they should be during a call? Perfect score, John Howe. Training hours for our firefighters, got them all. 2021, John Howe attended five classes in 35 hours. He got a perfect evaluation. A district chief, 40 classes, 120 hours. The division chief, two classes, two hours. My son Austin, 185 classes, 459 and a half hours, less than a perfect review. 2022 classes and hours, up to my son's death, he took 60 classes and 157 hours. John Howe for 2022 took zero classes and zero hours. On 7/5/22, EF firefighter EMT Austin scored a glowing report. On July 13th of 2022, in place of Austin's signature where he should have signed, it was written, employee unable to sign due to being in a hospital. Austin never saw this review. He died two days later. Please reconsider the roles of Wylem and Howe as both are responsible for Austin's death. Thank you.
Andrew Reyes?
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Reyes. I have, I am the owner of the fitness company, The Oak, and I wanted to share with you guys an upcoming event that I have actually for Austin Duran. Part of what I am doing with my company is having a event series that brings fitness events to the City of Apopka to consistently train for something and have our public stay within the city limits to do events such as 5Ks and different obstacle courses and events like that. But my next event that I wanted to share with you guys is on July 15th. It's called Duran, and it is a workout, but my encouragement is that to support the Duran family, we are just asking for whether or not you're there to work out or just to support because it is a free admission to participate in the workout. But we have a lot of really cool raffle things that we're going to be raffling off, and those proceeds of the raffle ticket sales will be going to the Duran Boar House Foundation to support the safety training and ENT school. So hopefully we can see you guys out there on July 15th at Northwest Rec.
Time and date again?
Um, July 15th. It's a Saturday.
Okay.
Um, and that's at 8:00 a.m. at Northwest Rec.
Okay.
Awesome, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Andrew.
Of course. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I'll be there.
Awesome. Yeah, you're signed up to, to participate.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Okay, Narrette Turan?
Narrette Turan, former general employee, fourth half of the Public Services Department just over three months ago. What does it mean to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity? What does it mean to be a public servant? It has been shown in these very chambers that certain employees are successfully bucking the system. Why? Because you are overrun by unqualified persons. Worse yet, persons having delusions of perceived authority. Last council revered, revealed additional fleecing by an individual that passed unqualified judgment on my case. I called the city attorney from my office and asked if it was acceptable a little over a year ago for the city engineer to demand that I sign a lengthy document outlining additional additions to my job description without any approval from my manager. The city attorney answered that he could not advise staff on such matters. Really? Because two months earlier, on April 27th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. at a meeting regarding my first grievance against the Public Services Director, this smug city attorney was adamant that the level of hostility and toxicity he brought to the Public Services Department for the past five months did not meet the standard, his standard. He advised everyone in the room, which included the HR director, the Public Services Director, the Water Resources Manager, and myself, that from his experience in the private sector, having been verbally berated, harassed at all hours of the day, and even threats to his family could be permitted depending on the severity. Really? The smug city attorney entitled to the nth degree, as evidenced by his separation agreement. You know, he leaves good and decent employees to count our blessings while he's trying to count gold. Without your oversight, we, the people, will be disrespected, mistreated, taken advantage of, and yes, Commissioner Nesta, stolen from. As a former public servant turned concerned citizen, I know one of his title, the city attorney, knows well that there are rules and rules are to be followed. But unfortunately, one of his kind perceive rules are up to his interpretation, wrong. And when real authority finally stands up, he will sit down and people like him will. Anyone who thinks the law and policy protect those who do wrong, corrupt the blessings of liberty that we, the people, celebrate and uphold yesterday and every day. I believe a refund should be ordered of the city attorney because of his failure to serve and because qualified and competent interpretation of the law is the most noble of professions. And Mr. Bell, remember, little boys do what they're told. Men do what's right.
Sylvester Hall?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I hope everybody had a great Independence Day. I will be here until the end of time, just to remind you. Our country is in a national crisis because too many good people are standing by watching bad things happen and doing nothing about it. They sit completely silent. It is time for we, the people, to stand up and say no more. When I listen to what is being said just about every city council meeting, I'm saying, do the people cry going deaf ears? What is the commissioner, what is this council role into addressing those issues and then bringing it back to the public? Saying what was done about it? It's just like we just, we're just running dysfunctional. That can't be. When we normalize the abnormal, we dis, we desensitize the truth. I'm going to use that example with Commissioner Nesta. If I got the figures right, by moving our funds to another financial institute, we save about $45,000 a month. You multiply that by 12, you roughly get $540,000. Well, that's a lot of money that the city gained for that. So he should be commended for that. But he gets a threat on his life and his family life for saving a half a million dollars for the, for the city. Where are we at as a society? And we all deal with threats differently. Of course, I'm military, so I knew about threats 21 years to serve for threats. So I use Commissioner Becker. When he made the suggestion to bring in a overseer to oversee the, the roles and responsibility of our city commissioner, our city commissioner threw the flag up real quick. He said, I'm out of here. That's because he know if higher authority come in and review what he's doing, he would not only lose his job, but he would probably lose his license. Because if I know I'm not doing anything wrong, you can bring anybody you want in to audit or do anything you want. If I'm running, if I'm leading, if I'm leading with principles that matters, if I'm leading with integrity that matters, if I'm leading with honesty that matters, if I'm leading with accountability that matters, if I'm leading with responsibility that matters, if I'm leading with morals that matters, if I'm leading with ethics that matters, if I'm leading with character that matters, if I'm leading with procedures that matter, if I'm leading with leadership that matters, if I'm leading with laws that matters, is no way in the world you can get me to leave my job because I know I live that. I know, I don't talk it, I live it. So Commissioner, if anybody threaten you, make it public knowledge. We don't want nobody to be behind, behind their cowardice. Make it public knowledge. And I say this last thing, we're at a troubling time when we have a pastor that comes in here and pray for the demise of this, this commission. We are at a troubling time when that happens. And nobody on this council should allow that to ever take place. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor.
There you go. There you go. That's, that's good. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Rosemary and Jose Zamora, 370 East 7th Street here in Apopka. I've been to the council meeting several times to address, which at one time was an easement. I've been in my I've been in my home for 33 years now, and the easement is now a ditch, bigger than a ditch. When the rain comes, it goes in and I receive all the debris from all ends. And it has been addressed many times. Also, Mayor Nelson, when you're becoming a mayor, you spoke with my husband at his employment, you came to my home, and it was to be addressed. And you've been a mayor, a mayor for many years, and we hear it's in the budget, but it's, hasn't, nothing's happened. My brother-in-law, sister-in-law, Jorge and Celia, they are our neighbors, and they have the same thing. We have a ditch where we have everybody's trash coming in and growing trees and things that shouldn't even be growing in there, they're growing in there, and it hasn't been addressed. I was told that after they did the one on Lester Drive and fixed that and completed, they would come and start on 7th Street. That has not been done. And I have an issue, and if you go, I have pictures, I have videos of where every time it rains, I always have different debris. Right now, I have a big old tree trunk, which I have no idea how that got in there, but it's there. And that's blocking the debris to go through that little tunnel that you have to go out into the other side. So the City of Apopka was cleaning a few months back, and I says, wow, they're finally gonna start working on it. Well, City of Apopka only worked for their area of City of Apopka. They went ahead and they pulled out dirt and everything, and they put sod to help prevent it keep taking all the dirt. I called the city because we had a lot of debris. They came and they did, they, I'm gonna be honest, they do come. When I call, they do come and they clean, but nobody's come to clean this last one, last three. One day, I told them that, you know, it kept coming and was taking land, and you're about like, I'm gonna say 12 inches from the water meter for that water meter to go down. I was told the city is responsible for the meter to the street. Nothing's been done because that ditch would be the street. They've came and they've went ahead and they're doing like the survey to see what part belongs to what. That's been done, but nothing else has been done. Also, at the same time, the City of Apopka sent somebody, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna name who or anything because I did ask a name. I have the video of it, where he was taking land, dirt, grass from my side to cover up the curb. No, no. When my brother-in-law was having problem with his drainage and everything, the City of Apopka, when they were building the new hotel here, went and got the bricks and all the pieces of cement they found there and covered it up so nobody would see it. So to me, that's a Band-Aid. He's still having a lot of drainage issue. And they say that he's responsible for his side, and I understand that. But if the city would meet him halfway and fix what they needed to fix, he wouldn't have that problem. He speaks no English, so I speak for him. His brother speaks for him. I mean, 34 years in the same home and still nothing's done, something's wrong.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have, do you, if you make sure that Jason gets with them?
Yeah, somebody always comes out. That's just it. They come out and then they leave.
We, we have a new coordinator now for the Stormwater Department.
I've been told many times the same thing, but okay, Mayor.
Can you tell me what's your address?
370 East 7th Street, and there's this 318 East 7th Street. And my land sits in between, which is empty. It's 334 East 7th Street.
And I'm sorry, your brother-in-law's address?
318 East 7th.
7th Street?
East 7th. And the land, 334 East 7th, that's ours. And my home is on 370 East 7th Street. You ought to drive by.
So it's four different parcels?
Three.
Three, three different parcels?
318, 334, and 370.
So when was the first time you actually reported this problem?
25 years ago.
Well.
Recently?
Yeah, recently.
Last year. Last year and the year before and the year before.
Do you have those dates documented?
I do not. But I'm pretty sure they should have a document because they go out there.
They were out there.
Yeah, they do go out there, but that's just it. They go out there. And nothing gets done.
We'll make sure it's taken care of.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Nesta, we'll see.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Is that it? Okay.
I do have one question, though.
Sure.
Before a hurricane, we had a city light outside, and it's no longer there. We've gone to the, to utilities, and they say it's the city. I don't know.
Is that, that would be?
That'd be Chuck.
A lamp, a, a, a light lamp in front of their house across the street. 318 East 7th Street. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. With that, we're gonna go ahead and jump from the, before we get to the consent, I want to go ahead and jump to business item number two, which is the authorized execution of a contract for the assigned terms and appoint Cliff Shepard of Shepard Smith, Colmire and Hand as legal counsel for City of Apopka. Chuck, you wanna come up and?
Mayor, Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a letter of engagement to bring on Mr. Cliff Shepard as a legal representation for the City of Apopka. By you approving that, it allows staff and myself to deal with Mr. Shepard on day-to-day issues that concern legal matters. And Mr. Shepard is here, and we welcome him back, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to authorize the execution of a contract for the assigned terms and appoint Shepard Smith, Colmire, and Hand, PA's legal counsel for the City of Apopka.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, back to consent.
Mr. Shepard, it's glad to see you in that seat again.
Yeah, welcome back.
Gotta push a button. Happy to be here. Anything happen while I was gone? I'm good.
All right, we've got six consent agenda items. Anybody need to pull any of those items? Not, look for motion to approve as?
Just, just some correction on item number six. Just the titling on the document itself. Inside the report talks about six months to May 30th and.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Becker?
Some.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, need to designate an official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. Looks like everybody's going, so everybody is available. If anybody would like to step forward and say nominate somebody or?
I, I did it last year.
Okay.
Right, so.
And I did it the year before.
Okay, so let's get.
I would make a motion to nominate Commissioner Nesta.
All right.
Oh, boy, you're last guy out. All right, we have a motion to Commissioner Nesta, our official voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
It's, it's not, it's not terrible. It's actually.
I'm sure I'll enjoy it.
We'll have the, we'll have the list of the action items that the league wants to put forward. We'll have that for the next council meeting, so you'll have.
Perfect.
We'll kinda have a, kind of a feel for where they're at.
Excellent.
Okay, let's see here. Next, we are public hearing ordinance number 3010.
Ordinance number 3010. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from industrial to commercial for certain real property generally located east of Semron Commerce Place, west of Lake Pleasant Road, and north of State Route 436, owned by Shake the Nation's Ministries, Inc., comprising 2.4 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Hi, Mayor Council, James Hitt, Community Development Director. This item, staff has requested this be tabled to a date certain of August 2nd, 2023.
This one and the next one?
This one and the next one, yes.
Okay, so what motion do we make? We just to table this until the next?
To a date certain, which would be the August 2nd.
August 2nd.
August 2nd.
Yes.
Which would be the first council meeting of the month at 1:30 in the afternoon.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody, though, here to speak on this item? Okay, if not, then, okay, we'll look for a motion to to table this for a date certain of August 2nd. Have a motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3011. Yes.
Ordinance number 3011. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from IL Light Industrial to Sea Core Corridor Commercial for certain real property generally located east of Semron Commerce Place, west of Lake Pleasant Road, and north of State Route 436, owned by Shake the Nation's Ministries, Inc., comprising 2.4 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Same request for this is to post, or table to a date certain of August 2nd, 2023, 1:30 in the afternoon.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we look for a motion to table to the August 2nd meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3014.
Ordinance number 3014. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located west of State Route 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and north of Capitol Reef Way, owned by Hardy Holt, Bryn, Brynadett, Hoffman, Dana L., Hoffman, Carol A., Heck, Joyce A., and Brini Francois P., comprising 44.74 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request, accept the first reading of ordinance number 3014, amending the future land use for Wild Oaks Golden Gem Property from county rural to mixed use. The subject properties are located west of State Road 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and north of Capitol Reef Way, approximately 44.7 acres in size. Properties are within the Kiva Parkway Interchange Vision Plan area and the City's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy 20.9 and the KPI Form Base Code require that the properties have a mixed-use future land use designation. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to amend the future land use map of the said properties from county rural to mixed use. The applicant intends to enlarge the previously established Kelly Park Crossings, now known as Wild Oaks, by adding the subject properties to the development area. The applicant's request is consistent with the mixed-use future land use designation in the overlay district covering the property within the vision plan. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on June 13th, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use amendment. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3014 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean Sanchez?
There's just, and Pam and I actually discussed this or differently, is that I have an understanding of just at, at different, at the planning commission, and also, I'm fearless, and I had brought it up at this meeting, I'm still waiting, I'm looking for that recording, is that we had the conversation with Attorney Tejero at the time that they will be improving Golden Gem, their frontage, to city standards. And I know that conflicts with what the pioneering agreements are. So there's just some conflicts there. I want to make sure, again, that just Golden Gem is taken care of, which Pam has assured me that that is gonna get taken care of. We're just waiting on Orange County to figure out the best way to do that, so.
Right, as I understand it, they're trying this, they're doing discussions with Orange, with Orange County and how to deal with Golden Gem Road, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I was gonna say. We're discussing, it's important to them, it's important to us. There's been too much bad information going back and forth. So I'm not gonna say anything else until I'm ready to bring y'all the plan, and you're all gonna buy into it, and we'll get moving.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Albert B. Kimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I went back to review the meeting of the workshop that was in February of this year where there was the pioneering agreement. And I believe there was a lawyer for the city who was appointed by the city, Jacob, I think, was his, is his name. If you go to the tape on YouTube at 19 minutes or approximately 18.3, 18 and a half minutes onwards, he has comments about the pioneering agreement. Unfortunately, the audio on that particular tape, the, the decibel increase in it is so low that, that I had to boost it and put in earphones and listen to it. But I believe that what, what was said there didn't differentiate from part of Golden Gem Road to the whole of Golden Gem Road. Now, that might have been an error, but in my opinion, he was speaking about the whole of Golden Gem Road when he spoke at the pioneering agreement. Admittedly, it was only a workshop, and they did speak about it later. But I think it's worth reviewing to, to have a look at what was actually said at the workshop meeting at that particular time. So again, it comes back to, to Golden Gem Road. And I have my opinions on what was said and what wasn't said. But I'm also aware that that was only a workshop meeting. It wasn't necessarily what was voted on. I did ask Susan if she had any records other than that. I haven't got any information back. And I would like IT to review their information that they have published on YouTube and make it so that we can actually hear what's listed. And just out of interest, as usual, when either Dennis New or I speak, it appears that the video and audio is cut. It was cut again today during my, my talk to you guys. Maybe you want to review who is interfering with the video and audio.
Mayor, Commissioners, Robert Hippler, Information Technology Director. I was notified by my staff that the video did pause at that. We have two separate audio recordings. We will certainly make sure we put that back in verbatim. There is nothing being done here maliciously. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3014 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3015.
Ordinance number 3015. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Assignment of Neighborhood and Employment District Overlays for certain real property generally located west of State Route 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and north of Capitol Reef Way, owned by Hardy Holt, Brynadett, Hoffman, Dana L., Hoffman, Carol A., Heck, Joyce A., and Brini Francois P., comprising 44.74 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is the rezoning companion to the previous item. I request accept the first reading of ordinance number 3015, changing the zoning and assigning the neighborhood and employment overlay districts for Wild Oaks Golden Gem Property. On October 19th, 2022, City Council adopted rezoning ordinance number 2962 and approved its accompanying master plan for Kelly Park Crossings, now known as Wild Oaks. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning designations of the subject property from County, County A1 Citrus Rural Zoning District to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use and assign the neighborhood and employment district overlays. They're all, the, the applicant intends to add the subject property, approximately 44.7 acres in size, to the Wild Oaks project boundary. The additional land area results in the following revised maximum, minimum, and proposed density and intensity calculations for the neighborhood and employment district. density and intensity calculations for the neighborhood and employment district overlays for Wild Oaks. The neighborhood size is now 39.78 acres with a proposed density of five dwelling units per acre for a total of 198 units, a proposed intensity of 0.5 floor area ratio for a total of 800,000 square feet of non-residential uses. Employment is now 113.87 acres with a proposed density of 4 dwelling, 4.4 dwelling units per acre for a total of 500 units, and proposed intensity of 0.5 FAA for a total of 2.3 million square feet of non-residential uses. The master plan shows approximately, approximate access points and connections, however, finite details of specific uses, site layouts, and access points will be provided at the time of the major development plan process. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on June 13, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed change of zoning, as well as assigning of the overlay districts for Wild Oaks Golden Gem property. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of 3015 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public which should speak?
I just have one observation, and that is, on the school report, the first sentence says it's deficient, rumor's not available, but the high school within the last sentence says that it's deficient in both the middle and the high school. So I don't know if we need to.
I'll double check. There were two, right, there were two separate OCPS capacity determinations, each one, one for neighborhood overlay and one for employment. We did it separately, so I'll double check the language on there for the second reading.
Okay.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I find it objectionable that, once again, the commissioners are deprived of the information that they require before voting on projects. We were made aware, I believe, a month ago, that there was a hiccup in the pioneering agreement. Tonight, Pam Richardson tells us she won't make comment on it. How can you be expected to make informed decisions on information that you've been denied to have? We should all be aware of what the hiccup in the pioneering agreement is, who's causing the hiccup, and when it's going to be resolved. Otherwise, nobody can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Anybody? Come on down.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Magic World Word Schools. High schools got portables on campus for the first time ever. They're already overcrowded. I showed you pictures last year of the hallways at the high school. It is not safe. Portables are not as safe. For the first time in 16 years, they are not using all the portables on the Wolf Lake campus. Why? And they've not been removed, do you know why? Because of this growth. There's space for 12 portables on the Jason Dolly School. We have got to put an anchor in this development until we get the schools in front of it. And yes, it's a big issue, but school district isn't doing anything about it. They're just saying, hey, we can put more portables on, let's throw them on there. We've got to stop this.
Anybody else from the public? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3015 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3016.
Ordinance number 3016. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Assignment of Interchange District Overlay for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and south of Kelly Park Road. Owned by Free Point Rapids Partners, GP, comprising 2.5 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request, accept the first reading of ordinance number 3016, changing the zoning and assigning the interchange overlay district for Wild Oaks Freeport property. The subject property is located west of State Road 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and south of Kelly Park Road, approximately 2.5 acres in size. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning designation from T Transitional Zoning District to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use and assign the interchange overlay district. Applicant also intends to add the subject property, approximately 2.5 acres, to the Wild Oaks Development Project Boundary. The additional parcels brings revised maximum, minimum, proposed density, and intensity calculations for the interchange district overlay for Wild Oaks. The interchange is now 71.27 acres with a proposed density of 15 dwelling units per acre for a total of 1,031 units and proposed intensity of .11 floor area ratio for a total of 362,723 square feet of non-residential uses. As in the previous item, the master plan just shows approximate access points and connections. Definite details of specific uses and layouts and access points will be provided at the time of the major development plan process. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on June 13, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed change of zoning. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3016 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
I just have a, it's a process question that, it's not specific to this, but just in general. So on here, it states that the Orange County was notified through our JPA, basically. It states that Orange County has expressed that they have no objection to the abbreviated notification. Is that to assume they actually responded, or do they respond to every project that we submit?
They don't, but we, the city makes it systematic that we send them notification of our development applications.
On every?
Everything, they're included in our development review agenda distribution, as well as, we have a JPA, a joint planning agreement with the county for entitlements also.
Okay, okay, that wasn't specific to this, although it is in there, but just clarifying there, thank you.
Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3016 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-17.
Resolution 2023-17. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, providing for a budget amendment.
Good afternoon. Resolution 2023-17, budget amendment number 14, pertains to a claim billing for workers' deductible billing for 2021. Inadvertently, they billed us as though we had a stop-loss insurance coverage, and we did not. So this is a back billing in the amount of 190,000. So in order to cover that billing, we need to take funds from reserve and, you know, move forward with the payment, if not the last.
Any questions for Blanche on this one?
What does that actually mean, this, when you say? And I'm sorry, because I didn't, I didn't ask you when we sat this afternoon, and I completely forgot, because I got involved with the financial. So what does this actually mean for us? What does this mean?
They had our coverage in 2021 in place as though we had a stop-loss type of coverage, but we don't. So when they found the error, okay, they removed that stop-loss, like say, it's at 250,000, they came back and want to build us for that excess, and it was related to claims such as a back injury and that required surgery, and a claim for head, neck, and spine injuries due to a vehicle crash. So when you're limited on how much you're being charged when you have stop-loss, in this case, they had that in place, but we did not actually have it. That wasn't the type of policy that we had in 2021. Okay, okay, and I know Chuck may want to comment on this. We are asking them to look at our current coverage right now to determine whether, you know, we, having a stop-loss in place would be more cost-effective for us or not.
As Blanche and I looked into it, there was no stop-loss policy to cover this. So I have asked Christie, who handles our workers' comp, to get with our insurance, which is the Florida Municipal League of Cities, to quote us a cost to put a stop-loss policy on it. And basically, a stop-loss is where we would stop paying at a certain point, and then the insurance policy would pick up to carry the rest. So you can do a stop-loss like at 200,000, and then anything above 200,000 would go against the stop-loss policy. At the time this was billed, we did not have a stop-loss. And when myself and Blanche were made aware of it, we want to see if it would be beneficial for us to have a stop-loss policy to cover this in the future. But as it stands, at that time when this was instituted with the FMIT, we did not have that policy.
But realize by having a stop-loss, it saves you on premiums. So we did, we got a discounted premium, wasn't like we forgot to cover something. We got a discounted premium because we had a stop-loss. So now the question is, you know, do we, we go back to stop-loss, kind of like having money in our account for grants, you know, to matching grant monies. Do you put money aside for the stop-loss, or do you just go, you know, do you get fully insured?
And that's what we're asking, because the stop-loss policy could cost us $200,000, $300,000 a year. Till we get a quote back from them, we don't know. So it may be cheaper the way that this was originally set up. But for myself and Blanche feel comfortable, we want to see what that stop-loss policy would run us.
So we don't have that?
Not in that year.
At that time, they did not, and we don't have it currently. We will be looking at it, and that's what we're exploring.
So do you have claims already submitted for reimbursement, and we don't have the stop-loss? Those claims will be covered?
They're covered. What stop-loss, basically, Commissioner, what happened is, at this particular time, we had a major back injury, and that ran us above and beyond what would have normally picked up onto the stop-loss, and that's why it accelerated up there high, with some major back injuries, surgeries, and that's why it ran so high back then. But like I said, till I know and Blanche knows, and we look at the dollars, what that stop-loss insurance covers versus what we actually have to pay currently, we don't know.
Basically, it's a deductible.
Yeah, it's a deductible, correct.
I'm sorry.
It's a deductible.
Oh, okay.
It's sort of like a deductible.
A $1,000 deductible or 2,500. We chose to go kind of way up high on our.
And Edward was, and I can't answer for Edward, he was involved when they created this policy. So I don't know what his thinking was at that time, but for me and Blanche to feel comfortable, we want to know what's best for us in the long term, to buy a stop-loss policy or to continue the current way we're insured.
Okay. Would you give us an update when?
We certainly will.
Oh, sure.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-17.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I think it's out there somewhere. You good?
Velasquez and who?
Oh.
Who was the second?
Okay, all right. All right, Commissioner Nesta, you want to lead us out?
Sure, I just have one, one specific topic that I want to take a deep dive into. It'll be concise, but very direct. I think everybody up here has, in some way, shape, or form, has gotten a threat in some capacity. It's obviously gotten more and more prevalent as social media has come into play, people have become keyboard warriors. More recently, my wife has come under attack of threats, and that will not, I will not stand for that in any capacity. I was elected to do very specific things, be transparent, advocate for ethical leadership. I've saved the city lots of money, and it's not my wife or my children that should be under any type of duress or threat. There was a threat made via social media, and I have communicated that with the appropriate authorities locally, statewide, and federally. So that will be found out, and I think, again, it's kind of been systemic throughout our city recently, that, and it's unacceptable, completely unacceptable, because nobody up here that's elected should be dealing with that in any capacity. And for me, again, I will not, I have a zero tolerance for this in any capacity at all, especially when it comes to my wife and kids. Also, a picture has surfaced of my wife and kid's vehicle, which is disgusting. So this will be found out, I will figure out who it is, I will make sure that that is known, who did this, and I, in no uncertain terms, I'll make sure this never happens again. I want to make sure nobody else up here has those threats either. I think that we should, on one accord, have some type of policy or a written statement. And as the chair mayor, I do believe that some of these threats have come from some of your supporters, so I would really appreciate publicly.
No.
They have publicly only endorsed you and then only attacked me. And if anybody's attacking your wife either, it's unacceptable. I know they have.
Absolutely.
And we should go against it. I want to come as one accord, and we should say, policy, absolutely not.
Oh, yeah, let me tell you about what's been said about my family.
I know, it's disgusting. I don't disagree with you.
Don't, don't, don't put me in the same boat with whatever's being said out there on social media. That's not, I just can't believe you just said that. I cannot believe you just said.
Well, then, what we can do is come on one accord and say this is unacceptable.
It is unacceptable, it always has been, it always will be.
Well, then, let's put it together, a letter with all of our names, that we do agree, to say, we will deal with this with the full force of the law. This is unacceptable in any capacity. Do you agree to do that?
Yes. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't even have to be brought up.
I totally agree, but unfortunately, we do, because people are dealing with disgusting ways of dealing with our families, and I will not stand for it any further at all, on anybody that's elected up here. I'm not saying just myself, just anybody, nobody deserves, especially our families. They didn't, they didn't choose to be elected. We did.
Well, they took, they went after my mother, so don't tell me about.
I agree, it's disgusting. I completely agree with you. And let's deal with it, full front on, let's not, okay. Heard. And with that, I am done.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I don't know if it was a threat, but, you know, I did have individuals taking pictures of my house and my vehicle. They haven't, it's threatening my wife yet, she's a pretty strong woman, she's, and, but I agree with, there's maybe some kind of statement or policy, whatever our attorney thinks that needs to be done in order to discourage that kind of behavior. And so I think it just aimed at all of us, regardless of what our viewpoints are. I also just want to say that, in reference to the schools, as a former educator, at the last school that I was at, we had portables as well, and because of the overcrowding, and when it rains, it really makes it difficult for students to move from one point to the next point, and it is unsafe. But until we go to Tallahassee and make a stand in Tallahassee, because I understand that that's where all the rules come from, that a school has to be a certain percentage overcrowded before the local school board can even begin to build a new school, even though they're collecting the funds in the event to one day do that. So if we stop construction with the current law, we'd never get a new school. And so it's kind of like you're caught between a rock and a hard place, either you do or you don't. So I think that we need to look out at our state elected officials and get them to petition the Board of Education to do something about changing the rule as to when a new school can be constructed. I will not be here for the next city council meeting. As you know, I serve on the Elec Apopka Natural Gas Board, and we were having a national convention in Arizona. No, it's not Phoenix, some of the. Scottsdale, Scottsdale, Arizona, so I will not be here for the next meeting, I'll be representing the city at that convention.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I mean, just to echo the points on the threats, I mean, so I echo all of your sentiments up here. Our families should be absolutely off limits. Period, end of sentence. And the criticisms of us, I've said it at the Leg Turn before, I've said it up here before, we also, we have to have thick skin in terms of people's assessment of the performance that we do within the job that we're serving for. You know, people can get up here, Mr. Olson can come up here and, you know, get on our case about schools, and rightfully so, great. Mr. McKimmy can get up here and talk to us and get on our case about traffic improvements to Golden Gem. Fantastic. People can come in here and complain about ditches on their property that they've gotten unresponsive, not responsive, response from the city. We all should feel that level of criticism all day long. But the, like, I touched on at the last meeting when I made my announcement, but that was not the driving force. Yes, I got a veiled threat. It wasn't a threat of physical harm, but it was a. It wasn't a threat of physical harm, but it was a what goes around, comes around type of dialogue. And that has very, in my eyes, the way that it was drafted, clear intent. But we, we shouldn't be subject to that. And I'll make a call to all these social media pages. Report the facts, and that's it. Have your point of view on what's going on. You can say commissioners up here, they don't know what the heck they're talking about. Hey, let's vote them out the next election. Great, that's, that's totally fine. But on social media, you know, doing personal attacks of the family and, and just keep it to the facts. And I think we can all appreciate that. Hold us, hold us accountable in that regard, not this other stuff. Because again, we all have, all have families up here, and that's not the type of city that we want to portray ourselves to be. One issue, Mr. Baverick, we had talked about this last week. I have a feeling, maybe some presses here for this one particular item. That was going around on social media around impact fees. I don't know if you just want to, for the benefit of us as collective council, where we stand on that one and just kind of high level, you know, what we're.
Sure. As part of that, I met with Cliff earlier today. And basically, the industrial area that's up around the airport, their attorney of record has notified the city that they are in disagreement with the impact fees that were charged. They were charged on an industrial level. They contend that it's a manufacturing level. And they notified us that they were contesting and do not agree with the fees that were charged. They were calculated based on the industrial level. I've asked Mr. Shepherd to look into it, and I'm not ready to concede, nor is the city ready to concede that it's manufacturing. That's what attorneys get paid to do, is to look and interpret. And I've asked him to interpret the language and to see if they were charged correctly or incorrectly. If they were incorrect, we will make the proper corrections. If not, then we will work with their attorney to ensure that they paid the fees that are properly due to the city.
Thank you for that. I just want to make sure that everybody was aligned on that one. Other two items, I've got two resolutions that I want for us to contemplate. One's probably a little bit more meaty, I guess, in terms of, this is just more of the intent to get the juices flowing. But one of the things that's been brought up is, and, you know, other forms of government do this on a recurring basis, but the idea of reviewing our charter on a periodic basis, something that hasn't been done in quite some time. We've had some issues recently around charter interpretations. We hear different opinions around folks, that's been discussed in these chambers before over the last 10 years, as it relates to our form of government, number of seats that should sit on this council, you know, as we experience growth within the City of Apopka, the establishments of districts, single-member districts, we've talked about it before, term limits, and really just kind of opening up our entire charter for inspection by a group that's targeted to doing so. And so what I have here is a draft resolution for that purpose with the idea of spinning up and having a charter review committee. The, the kind of the scope of work, I just kind of touched on it, right? It's, you know, really looking at our entire charter, but really kind of focusing on key big items. It would be comprised of 11 members is what we're proposing, or what I'm proposing. That would, each person up here would have two appointees, the mayor would have three.
Can you hold on until I get a copy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Like I said, it's, it's a little bit lengthy to read just right now. But I think my ask here would be that we give instruction to staff to take this resolution in its current form, make sure that it's, it's buttoned up from a formal perspective formality, and then we embark on that task. This administration has talked about doing it at some point in the future anyways, but there's no sense in waiting. You'll see in here, and this is what I need clarity on, is whether or not it truly has to be a 12-month period that they're in process, or if it can be abbreviated, accelerated, what have you. But I would, you know, ask that staff, take a look at this, and we instruct staff to do that. And I don't know if there's a feeling on this, of this board, if there's similar will to explore this.
There is. I was, actually, that was on my commissioner's report, was to bring up the city charter once again. Obviously, in the last year and a half, maybe two years, we've met a lot of challenges about what our responsibilities are, what we, I guess, what powers do we really have as a, as individual commissioners and as a board? And obviously, we've challenged some of that, and it's been met with, as Mr. Becker has said, where we've had the charter reviewed not just by our city attorney, but as recent as an attorney up in Tallahassee. And it just kind of leaves us where we're unsure about what, you know, where can we go? How far can we go with our votes? And certainly, I never want to experience that, a vote that is officially taken here on the dais as a ceremonial vote, because that left us really in a tizzy, which we were, we didn't understand that. So absolutely, I'm, I'm for this recommendation. And now that we have Mr. Cliff Shepherd here, if he can look this over so that we can start working on this, this is very important, not just for us, but as we go into the next election, but for future council for the City of Apopka, because we are growing. And if each of us, when we each campaign, I mean, the debates and the questions that are asked of us, now I look back at some of those questions, and I'm saying, maybe I should have just said, listen, I don't have any authority over that. That question doesn't apply to me. But I think that as we move forward, and we can look over the charter and have some kind of define what, who we are to our constituents, and what can we move forward? And certainly, you know, what's our roles in the city government? That's so important for our taxpayers to understand what our roles are. And so this is important to me. So absolutely, if we can move forward to have this expedited as soon as possible.
Is there any other general feelings of the council?
Happy to have, we'll have Cliff.
Is it possible to have a review of this done before the next city council meeting?
I don't know when the date is, but I actually will be happy to get it reviewed before then. But I think I'm going to want to talk to you specifically and to the larger council because of, there may be a better way to build that mousetrap. I've done charterers now about 25 different times, and so I have a, an opinion. We can still do it however you want to do it, but I think you at least want to hear it from me.
Okay.
Absolutely. I think what I'm most interested is the outcome. The outcome being, we have a very targeted and purposeful charter review.
Exactly. That's exactly the goal, which is why I have the suggestions. I have, which y'all are there for you to pursue or not pursue, but, but I've learned from doing this that there is a way that works a little bit better than the other way.
Okay. So why don't you discuss that with us?
Well, what I would suggest first, because I don't ever like to ambush anybody up here, is that I would meet with your permission with Mr. Becker to explain why I, I recommend what I do, so it's understood and transparent. And then if he says, no, I want to look at my thing, okay, then that's what we'll do, and y'all can ask me the next meeting. I could do that at the next meeting, and I could certainly meet with him before then.
What if you were to, we were to suggest a workshop?
That, that's also fine, because what we would be workshopping is, how do you want to go about it? And like I said, I, I'm right now in the issue of doing the Eatonville Charter, for example. I'm a town attorney for Eatonville. I've done Orange County's charter, which lasted well over a year. I've seen independent charter reviews. I've seen not-independent charter reviews and everything in between. I've seen charters that get reviewed every two years. So I have a lot of experience. So even if you end up ultimately doing something different, you'll at least know why I think what I think, which is, there's a good way to do this that's efficient, that makes sure the entire charter is reviewed, and make sure that the issues that are ultimately put before the voters are ones that at least three of you agree should be put before the voters.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I think the point that you were maybe getting at is, I don't need to be the driving force. Obviously, whatever options, scenarios that you have, I mean, obviously, us as a council have to.
Yeah, I would rather, if maybe we can schedule a workshop, is, is that more feasible than?
That's fine. Again, I, I'm happy to explain. I mean, I'll give you a preview of the kind of things that might cause you to think a little bit over the next week or two. One of the things I will be recommending is that you guys serve as the charter review committee. And don't bother with the city's an appointment, and I'll explain the reasons why I think that's important. But you don't have to do it that way, but I'll tell you why my experience leads me to believe that that's the right way to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, to, to echo Commissioner Becker and Commissioner Velazquez, I think if we can do, I mean, I think it's going to take a decent amount of conversations, but a workshop starting maybe at 6:00 or 5:30 before the next meeting, we can notice that now we have enough time. We should be able to do that, assuming that you've had time to review and, and you're comfortable with.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
When it comes to charter review, I could do it right now.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, then let's, let's do that, so it's not, I think this is great.
Yeah, so can we, can we settle on that one? Can we do the six o'clock workshop for the next city council meeting?
I'm not going to be at the next meeting.
Oh, you're not, but, all right. What about a workshop before?
We hadn't had one in how many years? 15 years? You, Cliff, were you on the last one we did?
I'm not sure. There may have been some charter items, but I don't think it was a comprehensive review.
No, there was, no, because I sat before I became a commissioner in 2014. I sat at a charter review, and I'll tell you the truth, I think one thing was changed in the whole charter.
And, and I think that may be accurate, and that's, again, jumping ahead of the curve a little bit, one of the problems when I've seen independent, or not independent, but citizen-led charter reviews, is they never get through the whole charter, because they jump all around, and they have specific issues they're interested in and not others. But if you really want to do a review, as opposed to, I think we need an amendment on this specific issue, got to start at the article one and go to article whatever it is, and make sure everything is covered. And that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. What do you think?
We got, we have to have Commissioner Smith there. I think we wait for, I think we need to wait. I mean, we're not in a.
Yeah, that's a key issue, sure.
So we are in a hurry, because we've spent the last three months arguing interpretation of our charter, which leads me to my second resolution.
Well, before you present your second resolution, Attorney Shepherd, is it possible, after you have met with Commissioner Becker, that you can meet with each of us prior to us bringing it back to workshop?
As long as I'm got permission to do that, I'm happy to do that.
So that, so that we don't come to the workshop.
Sure.
Not knowing what your other suggestion was.
The good news is, I have the recommended methodology on paper, because I've had to present it before. So once I've explained it to Commissioner Becker, I'm happy to send it out to everybody and then meet with any of you, or answer questions through email, however you want to do it, it's no problem.
Thank you.
When do you leave, Commissioner Smith?
The Saturday before the meeting.
What's that date? Just so that we make sure that you are included in the discussion before you leave.
I'll leave on the 15th.
Oh, the 15th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And the last piece of business is, you know, we've, we've talked about this now for several meetings. The last meeting was something that I think many people in this chambers kind of looked at this, this dais and were just in awe of what was being discussed up here as it relates to our former city attorney. So I've, I've got a resolution censured that I've, I've compiled, and I hope it's, for the sake of full transparency and one record of what we've dealt with as it relates to the situation, versus having to go and hunt and peck in, in meeting minutes to really get an idea of what's gone on here. So the title is Resolution to Formally Censure Mayor Brian Nelson, whereas a core tenet of serving in elected office is transparency and truthfulness to ensure public trust. Whereas Mayor Brian Nelson by charter serves as the chief executive officer of the city and shall be responsible to the electorate for the administration of all city affairs placed in his charge. Whereas on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, in a public hearing within the City of Apopka Council chambers, Mayor Nelson did prove untruthful public comments were made about the employment status of the city attorney during prior public meetings. Whereas on, on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, through interpreted charter authority, a majority 3-2 vote of city council resulted in a formal approved action to terminate the city attorney, as recorded and approved in minutes. Whereas Mayor Nelson did not honor the approved action of the city council pertaining to the termination of the city attorney. Whereas on Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023, the city attorney did voluntary, voluntarily resign during a public hearing within the City of Apopka Council chambers, as recorded and approved within minutes. Whereas Mayor Nelson on Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, did on record inform city council the city attorney was no longer employed as of that day, June 7th, 2023, as recorded and approved in minutes. And whereas on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, when asked by city council about the employment status of the city attorney, Mayor Nelson indicated he was still employed as of that date, June 21st, 2023, and receiving pay, as recorded and approved in minutes. Therefore, it be resolved that the city, the city council hereby formally censure Mayor Brian Nelson for misleading the city council, and by the same, the people of Apopka through untruthful public comments regarding the employment status of the city attorney. And I would just, you know, I know this is the first time you're reading it, but everything that I've, I have highlighted there is factually accurate.
No, it isn't.
And readily available within the meeting minutes. And I'll, I'll let others react to it. Now, I would invite you to clarify any inaccuracies that you are.
Right. I mean, he is, he is.
Well, we, we'll have to go back to the, the audio of what Michael Rodriguez said, and it wasn't that he was resigning that day. He said he was, he was going to help the transition, so you, we can go back and get the records.
He tendered his resignation that day.
No, no, he didn't. No, he didn't.
But that's not the point of this censure. On May, on June 7th, you freely admitted that he was no longer employed with the City of Apopka. On June 21st, you freely admitted that he was. Again, we just approved those minutes tonight.
Right.
Those are, I don't know if you're able to identify that that's a difference of what you say, and that's what I say is untruthful public comments. Okay. I just, I, I want as a council to, to, for us to sit up here and say that that's not good enough. You can't tell us one thing, and then the next meeting, it's something completely different.
I, I do remember he said that the attorney did not want to deal with the council. I do remember that.
That's in the minutes as well. But I, I just, you know, this is the type of stuff that we were just talking about. I mean, we have to do these in formal ways that just let everyone know that we're not going to accept not having full transparency and truthfulness when it comes to when we're asking about people that are employed within the City of Apopka. And I just, I would, I would hope that this council can appreciate that, and we would vote to approve this resolution.
Well, I'm going to kind of appeal to, to the attorney. I mean, during commissioners' reports and mayors' reports, and a resolution comes before us, how, how did, how does that become official, or how does it work?
Well, if it's a resolution, it typically, I mean, this is not legally required, believe it or not, in Florida, you're not even required to legally have an agenda for a meeting to comply with sunshine law. But every city that we represent does. But, so how it typically comes forward is, you'd have a resolution that shows up on your agenda, is this is going to be a resolution, and it's read by title, you know, the, the resolution of the city council, blah, 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 blah. And then you have your discussion, your vote. Ordinances, two meetings, resolution one, unless it's a certain kind of ordinance. And so that's how it typically goes. So as I understand this, there's a resolution that's being presented. I don't think it's on the agenda, at least it's not on the agenda that I have. So if you're, if you're asking me if that's the ordinary procedure, I don't think it's the ordinary procedure you guys follow. But it could be. There may be precedent that this has happened before. I don't know, I haven't been here in a little bit.
So here, here's precedent was set earlier this year, when I wanted to have a consideration of the Economic Development Department put on the agenda. of the Economic Development Department put on the agenda. The administration refused to have it enumerated within the agenda itself. So I had to come, first meeting, ask council to get it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we had to go that route. So that's the precedence that I've experienced, but, you know, if we're saying that our policy or our charter precludes us from introducing a resolution like this...
No, charter doesn't.
Yeah, right, I didn't think that it did.
No, it's not, I'm asked about, how do we ordinarily do it? And I, the way it's done on almost every place is that there's an agenda item for whatever the resolution is, even if it's recognition of Public Works Week or something like that. So that's typical, but it is not legally required. In fact, unless you need to do something that has a legal advertisement requirement, and that's like planning ordinances and things of that nature, you do not need an agenda per se. It is best practices and every lawyer will tell you that's the way you should do it, but it's not legally required.
Yeah, and I just want to comment too, obviously, this was something that I had found. I mean, that, through the amount of digging that I have to do to make sure that everything that we have is accurate and true, and it was a direct lie that occurred up here and that it makes our jobs that much more difficult to work ethically and for the best of our residents that elected us when we're actively being lied to. And we just can't do that, that doesn't work. So there's got to be some type of effect in action that took place to the act of lies to try to deceive the entire council as well as the residents.
So with a resolution to formally censor, I just have to understand, I mean, I'm looking at this, it is, to me, it's factual, I've sat through all of this, but what does it mean to formally censor the Mayor, Mayor Brian Nelson? What does that mean to us, to the taxpayers, to the public?
It's, I would love to be able to make an analogy, but I'm not sure I can come up with one. The best thing I can use is the analogy that's at the federal level, but it's even more significant there than it is here, but that's where censures actually typically occur, of congressmen and so forth. And it's usually for behavior of some sort that either violates the Senate ethics or the congressional ethics or whatever. What its impact is, it is essentially, we do not approve of whatever the thing is, and as a body, we're telling you that. In terms of its effect, it has no legal effect, and that's the court of the hat I wear. Where there has a practical effect is a political question, so that's where the lawyer should step back. But that's, the typical effect, if there is one, is political, not legal.
So at this juncture, you know, the chair, who is the mayor, Mayor Nelson, when you look at this, what is not factual on this?
The factual is when he was going to resign. He didn't say he was going to resign that minute. He said he would help, because he was helping interview after that, the date of that council meeting, he was interviewing folks. I mean, you want to bring it forward at the next council meeting, put it as an agenda item, I'd like, I'd like to be able to respond to the resolution, but if not, go ahead and do it and we'll call it a day.
I'd be open to that.
I would be, I would be...
Though the words aren't going to change on the paper, I mean, if anybody else on here wants to add to it, but, and again, to the mayor's point, nowhere in that language does, I just made an observation that the city attorney did voluntary resign during a public hearing. There's no mention to the minute, the hour of the day, it just, factually speaking, he resigned voluntarily during the meeting. And that's, all of this is, the beauty of it is, it's all on YouTube.
It is.
And it's approved in our minutes. So happy to go either way, and in all fairness to Mayor Nelson.
I think a response is appropriate, I think that is the correct thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith, is there any...
Well, I was just going to say, I would like for us to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, because I would like to go back and look at the meeting that I was absent for. All right? So that's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Fair, so can we take an action to make sure that it's on the agenda? So can we, I move that the resolution to formally censure Mayor Brian Nelson be on the agenda for July?
But that's the date, he's not going to be here for the next meeting. Commissioner Smith, you said you're not going to be here for the next meeting.
Correct.
August 2 would be the next one.
Okay.
Okay.
August 2?
So, yeah, same motion, August 2.
My second.
Okay. So this will be in the agenda?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. So four to one, it'll be on the agenda for next, August 2. Okay. Anything else Commissioner Blazquez?
No, other than last night for the 4th of July, it was a very nice 4th of July celebration and thank you to the Recreation Department for all the work that you do out there. It was a great, you know, day, a lot of residents and visitors did come out and, you know, I stayed till the end, I stayed to watch all, everyone exiting the parking lot and it was very organized and I think the residents appreciate that. I mean, I actually stood out there for almost, you know, I was timing to see how long it would take before kind of the parking lot emptied out. It took 18 minutes. So congratulations to you and the entire staff. You keep the park clean, I saw the maintenance workers constantly changing the garbage cans and it was a very nice evening. So thank you.
Okay. Anything else Chuck or Cliff? Good? Okay. All right, yeah, 4th of July, that's great. We also had the concert on Sunday night, Frank Taylor and Music to Our Mind, a great concert, had biggest crowd ever, about 220 people there. Next up, had a meeting with the DE, well, we had Richard and Dio and Glenn, I think we had a meeting on, about the Clear Lake, the long-term solution, getting more complicated, but I think we've got a somewhat of a resolution. We, if we take over the system, which was kind of what we thought about, we would have to go through DEP and St. John's regulations, which would be, go from a $300,000, $400,000 fix to a multimillion dollar fix, that's probably not going to work. But we think we've got a way that the HOA can take on the system, got a few little hurdles to jump through and got to make sure DEP and St. John's are on board. So we should have some resolution, or how we move forward in the next 30 days to try to fix that. And then last, certainly not least, had a great article in the Florida Turf Digest, our own Donnie Rowland in the back was featured about all the work that he does out at the Northwest Complex and the whole team we have at Northwest with, just a great work they do, keep our fields, you know, nice and pristine, you know, playable and, and I just want to, you know, big shout out to the whole team, Donnie, for what you guys do to make our, make our city proud. So thank you.